Ready?
Call to order and recording of members present and absent.
Barton.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
McDermott.
Here.
Pinkleton.
Here.
And Hanson is absent.
Open meeting compliance statement.
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alva Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that prior to December 15th of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least 24 hours prior to this meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view at the office of the superintendent.
Consent agenda. All the following items which concern reports and items of routine nature normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of the discussion, consideration, and approval of the following. Are there any additions, any new items of new business to the agenda? The minutes of the July 8th, 2024, regular meeting, approval of the finance report, approval of the extra duty assignment, schedule approval of the activity fund report, approval of the activity fund fundraisers, and approval of the activity fund interaccount transfers, child nutrition, and declaring any item surplus. We'll go back to the minutes. See any corrections or any minutes? Let's look at the finance report.
Okay, the first one there is the investment measures. It's kind of the total investments in the general fund, give 5.296 million. Invested general fund, building fund was at 3.469 million. Carried over there. Rest of those is child nutrition and gifts. Two, two main accounts. Still sitting very healthy. And then on the next one, same as the carrier reports. Again, I was kind of talking to the general building fund. He had a fund balance at the end of the year. Once reserves and outstanding wealth were taken, taken out of $5,912,647 in the general fund. In the building fund, we had a carryover again with warrants and reserves held out of $3,916,217. We saw a little bit of shrink in the general fund. I think there's some, there's some things we can move, some salaries simply move around to the building fund. And if you remember, we had a under collection in the press production about 41% last year. And that's, that's where the majority of that's going to come to lie. That's kind of what those financials were. One thing I would kind of get down the list here. There is a little change to the extra duty schedule. Darian.
Farrell.
There you go. Sorry, still learning names. Darian Farrell resigned as softball coach and Natalie Nichols will replace her as assistant softball coach at the middle school. So that's the only change on the, on the extra duty schedule.
We have, has Ty Hooper been added to an assistant football coach at high school? Is that new?
Yes, I'm sorry, that's also on there.
That's new, okay.
It's going to help for high school as well as middle school. So they're getting that, their team put together. Revenue expenditure summary, that's on the activity account. One thing I'd bring your attention to, the general athletics account. Started the month, had around $3,100 in it, $3,147, I believe. Just talking to Mr. Beether before the meeting started here. The marketing plan that we pushed out, what, two, two weeks ago, Coach? We've got 25,000 collected that needs to be deposited and then another, I mean, there's others, other pledged up there as well. So that's, that's coming, coming back together as well. On activity fund. There is three fundraiser forms. One is to sell yearbooks. I don't care about the cost of that. The other two are for band and cross-country at the Community Blitz. Then band is doing a bake sale and cross-country host, cross-country race. So those are the fundraisers.
Well, we try to do this en masse like we have in the past, like our fundraisers. And maybe we've already done some of that.
We did.
Some of that.
It was the last month.
Yeah.
Had 138 of them, I think.
So we'll do, yes, I'm slow getting here, why not? So just don't worry about that.
So the vast, vast, I think, I remember, I think last year we had 154 fundraisers total. We improved to 138 last month. And then we'll have, we'll have some trickle in here.
We'll have some stragglers, won't we?
Sure. There is an interaccount transfer. That is to transfer the money out of the academic quizzable account into the high school account. Close that, we haven't had an academic team in three or four years. So that's to close that account, transfer the money into high school. Just to think some stuff out there. And then if we're ready. Anyway, that's on the consent agenda.
Okay, so we don't have a child nutrition report?
Not yet.
It's okay.
We can go back on the. On the carrier reports, Fund 22 is your child nutrition. There was a. Carryover 247,000. Just to, I think, I have, I mean, well, we can talk about it a little bit too when we talk about lunch prices. We're looking at how some of these districts are doing their free lunches. Two or three ways to do it. A lot of it has to do with your free and reduced lunch count. Okay, so I know at the site level, there's a hard push to get as many of those free and reduced lunch applications filled out. Whether you think you, that, that's the trick there. Whether you think you qualify or not, you don't know until you go through it. And the worst thing to say is no, right? You might get a reduced lunch, you might get free lunches. But if we give that free and reduced lunch count, if it's high enough, then we start qualifying for some of these other programs where they're doing something. Talk to, talk to Superintendent Laburne, they went to a provision two with the state. And it has to do with the way, the way you're funded with the federal money. They're in provision two, and they're paying for the students' lunches out of their child nutrition carryover. If they had enough carryover, they were having to spend some. Our carryover's not that high. So we don't, we don't have enough in our carryover to pay for student lunches with carryover. And she's not sure she did either. She said, you wouldn't run out there and start paying again. So I'd rather not do that.
But in order to qualify for that, didn't everyone have to fill out a free and reduced form?
You've got to have a certain percentage that fills out the form, then you've got to have a certain percentage that, you've got, so right now, our free and reduced lunch counts are 51.63%. Okay, so we're close. Oh, we're real close. To qualify for some of that, so.
Out of the applications that you receive, how many more do you have just coming in? I mean, are we like 80% of the duty body parents filled them out?
You know, that, the.
15%? You know, I'm just asking.
The smoke is not cleared yet.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, we're, ask me, ask me in two weeks. I'll have a lot better number on that.
Okay, well, that makes a push about your.
It may, it may. So a lot of these applications get filled out in the spring.
Sure.
Okay, so I think, I think we're at the work of stage right now. We need to be collecting all this data and get, getting all of our ducks in a row. So we get to that February, March, April time, we start applying if we need to go provision two, we go provision two. If we need, there's, there's two or three different ones. I know Tyrone did it, and he's through a whole, whole different program. CES, I think, is what they call it. So I just think there's, we just get the data collected right now so that we can choose the best program and see, and see what we get done. So anyway.
Thank you.
Big push, good.
And thank you for doing that.
Hold on. So anyway, child nutrition report. We don't have a financial report because we, we haven't sold a lunch yet, so. Anyway, okay, that's, that's my stuff on the consent agenda.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Make motion with 3.1 to 3.9 as presented.
Second.
Pinkleton.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Hanson. Sorry, Kane.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Item number four, vote to approve purchase order encumbrances for the following funds for fiscal year '25. 4.1 General Fund as referenced, 4.2 Building Fund as referenced, and 4.3 Gift Fund as referenced. So we'll look at these.
There you go. 4.1 on the general fund. I might just bring your attention to handful of these. Purchase order 144 was to the AHA process. That's for district professional development. It's $12,330. It's based on how many teachers you have. That, I was really excited, to be honest, to see, to see that on our schedule. It shows that. It's Ruby Payne's Framework of Poverty. And I'm excited for teachers to hear it. It's not about, it's not about what we think of poverty being monetary. It's about a culture and a mindset. And frankly, since, nobody likes to hear this, but since COVID, our world has changed. And we, we all feel it every day. And so they address a lot of those cultural things through that workshop, things that we really need for our teachers, so.
And that'll happen sometime during the school year.
Wednesday.
Oh, this coming Wednesday, okay.
Yeah, a guy named John, Little John, will be here from New Jersey, I think is where he's at.
Welcome him to Alva.
He's the same, he's the same one that came two years ago to former schools. It'd be a good workshop. Purchase order 152 is to peak up time for $24,000. That is, it's a grant with E-Rate to upgrade all of our Wi-Fi. We pay about a third, and they pay about two-thirds. Okay, so that's, that 24,000 is our portion of a $70,000 grant-ish. 164 is to RISLOS Learning Systems for $10,000. That's our accelerated reader program. 165 is Fallout School Solutions. That, that is for our software in our library. Inventory's all written books and checks them in and out, all the things. 166 through 171, that totals $40,260. That's the OETT grant. For technology. Let me see all the things that are up there. 178 is the NWEA, $9,215.
Match testing.
Match testing. 182 is chatterbox speech therapy. That is our, our online speech therapist. We've got $110,880 uncovered for that. That should be for the year. So stepping stones. PO 183 is school psychologist evaluations. Do anger management testing, all of those kinds of things for, for our kids. Uncovering $42,000 there. And then this is really me, Dr. Myssler was Mr. Mill on this thing. Purchase order 185 is to the Broadway Exchange, exchange for a Baldwin baby grand piano. Sometime I asked Dr. Myssler, it's a kind of fun story. But they knew a person, they were selling it, had a baby grand from 1972.
1978 model. Yeah, it was in an auction through Broadway Exchange. They do a lot of estate sales, of living estate sales and that kind of thing. And my daughter actually said, hey, y'all have been talking about getting a piano. They have a baby grand in this, this auction. So I sent the information to Macy. She called Chuck Bellknap, she called Doug Newell. Chuck Bellknap's wife went over to where the auction during the viewing time and was playing concertos, evidently, to test off the piano. And so Macy was able to bid on the piano, and it was like nail biting to the end of, oh my gosh, Olivia, and Olivia and I were sitting there watching, my daughter and I were watching it together. And it's like down to a minute, and it doesn't look like Macy's the one winning the bid. And the bid was at $1,520. And then in the last 30 seconds, it was at 1,530, and Macy won the bid. And so we were so excited to get a baby grand piano, that's probably $15,000 piano, for 1,500. And then, when Macy is doing all of the paperwork and getting all of the stuff together so we can pay for it, someone paid for the piano for us. So there was an anonymous donor, and every time I think about it, I get teary-eyed, but an anonymous donor paid $1,530 for us to have a newer piano than what we have. The piano that's on the stage, Austin McGee looked up the serial number, and it was made sometime between 1955 and 1958. And it's been a beautiful, wonderful piano that has served us well. But it might have been original. I mean, it is that old. So.
It's not that old, buddy.
It's not that old.
It's brand new.
It's just brand new.
Or the original.
We're just so excited and so blessed to be able to say we have this fabulous piece of equipment. It's a fabulous instrument coming our way, and an anonymous donor paid for it. So we're having a mover. He said, well, surely the ag truck can't follow and clap. And it's like, no.
Did you say that?
Yes, he did.
Really?
It was a viable.
That's not how you would be. I, I was informed that this wasn't, you know, this wasn't something that farmers.
So we have a mover out of Oklahoma City that is going to pick it up and move it for us. So we'll have a little bit of an expense there. And then we'll have a little bit of an expense for casters for the piano to be placed on, on casters so we can move it in and out. But it's still not going to be $15,000.
No.
So.
That's a deal?
It, it is. And we're just so excited. I mean, it just, you know.
And Mr. Bellknap offered to tune it for free too?
Um, well. He was, he was certainly impressed with the instrument. So we're, we're really excited to be able to add this to our, our art department to, yeah, have this fabulous story. I mean, if you ever wonder, are there, is there good in the world? Absolutely. And Alva sees so much of it.
Yes, a lot of anonymous, just like you said.
Yes, anonymous donors.
I would love to know who did that. I would want to know. I know they don't, but I would want to know. It'd be nice to know.
Okay, let's go home.
Send the high note.
Send the high note, that's right.
I want to leave this today. I think it's, just can't get much better than that.
Good idea, for sure.
Well, that's awesome. So we're through the list, aren't we there?
Yes, ma'am.
Let's look at the building fund right quick. Is there anything there we need to know?
Yeah. So on the building fund, I just pointed out a couple of things. PO 24 is Northwest Flooring More. That was for carpet and a couple of classrooms at Lincoln and new stair treads, that kind of thing. We've got two or three AC HVAC repairs, AC and then the high school lift on the stairs repaired there. So those, that's what those $5,000 purchasers are. And that's just the normal stuff to get still started, school starts, cleaning supplies at the study, all that stuff. There's a 75, $29 purchaser, number 36, to STS Education. That is for charging stations, carts for the Chromebooks in the middle school. They're going to create classroom sets instead of sending the Chromebooks with home with the kids. See if we can make them last a little longer that way. So that, that's what that is. Rest of that's kind of normal stuff.
Yep, sounds good. So look at the gift fund right quick and see if it's anything there. Nothing there out of the ordinary, is there?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve 4.1, 4.2, and 4.3.
I move that we approve items 4.1, 4.2, and 4.3.
Second.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Pinkleton.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Superintendent's report.
We have one resignation. Alicia Boyett was a parent in the middle school. She resigned. That's the only resignation we have. And then, kind of talk about our facility and some of that. Like I said, we did get new carpet, stair treads was installed at Lincoln. And that was they've, we've had carpet this summer, pretty much Longfellow got some, but the middle school had some. So did some upgrades, trying to spread that around a little bit. New playground mulch, new playground mulch was installed at Longfellow and Lincoln. That's completed. I have a, have a roll-off dumpster coming next, I think it's supposed to be next Monday at the storage shed on the north side of the Carl Street North of the middle school. All that will get cleaned up. The, the old, the old pole vault pit sitting out front and the cafeteria tables around the corner, all the stuff in the back and the stuff on loading dock, the middle school, all that's.
Getting cleaned up.
It's getting cleaned up in the next two weeks. BNC Lawn Care, I talked to them and I asked them to come mow, mow all five sites August to September, next two months. You see, they've edged and done everything at the high school. And like the goal is to have all five sites done before Thursday when we get started. So BNC's coming. And then we had, they completed the majority of the upgrades in the, on the lighting in the indoor, where the football field portion is. Put all new LED lights, replaced those little fixtures. There's a couple of things we're going to add on to this. Two of the louver systems on the east end didn't work anymore. Pigeons, pigeons is what it is, have pushed against those aluminum grates so hard it bent them in and everything, the motor burned up and what have you. So we had to replace two of the louvers. He said the other two are so, are, they don't make parts for them anymore. And they're bound, same thing. So I asked him to price those if they're not just outrageous. Let's do all four of them while we're there, you know? And then he's making grates to go on the, I say grates, that covers to go on the outside of it to keep pigeons from pushing the slats in. So we just, that's about the only thing left to fix there, to finish. And we should be done with some of that. I talked to coaches and things about maybe painting and just doing some general upkeep maintenance in that facility to get it back where, where it needs to be. Because it's, that's a nice assembly in the facility. I'm going to say Western Oklahoma. I don't think it rivals anything a college would have. So we need to take care of it. So anyway, working on that. The only other thing I would remind you guys, we have the OSSBA State Summer Conference. It's coming up at the end of the month here. Registration for that is on the 23rd. We're already registered. You gotta go check in or whatever. That's the morning of the 23rd, the conference ends on the 25th. So 23rd, 25th. We've got hotel reservations for the six of us at the Holiday Inn downtown on the evening of the 22nd, 23rd, and 24th. So.
Where do we play football? Our next, our first game is a week after that.
Yes, that should be this Friday.
No, we don't have Perrin goes to that.
The only, only question about, they do have a pre-conference on the 22nd. If you want to go, you might have to, Terry, you don't get registered for that. Otherwise, I'll meet in the city on the 22nd.
There's some good hours on the 22nd if you need hours. The pre-conference is a good way to go and get that if you're, since we've got a room that night if you need them. I sometimes went to the pre-conference and then didn't do so much on Saturday. So you can do either way if you want to do that. I don't, what, what all is going on on a Sunday? I don't know that I've ever in my. The Sunday, actually on the Sunday, it's a big crunch. Round table? Yeah, a big crunch for, it's, you pay for it. It's, it's not, you know, included. But then it is round tables. And everybody, I used to think we were supposed to stay, but we haven't stayed. Well, I don't remember. Actually, I missed asking. I didn't know. We haven't stayed in a long time. Just simply because it's really just extra.
If you guys want to, or you can still cancel them, just let me know.
We probably, I probably.
Nobody wants to stay on Sunday?
I don't think so. I don't.
Any other takers?
I'm, I'm okay. Well, and I have found that if we actively participate in the sessions that are going on on Thursday and Friday, we get all 15 of the points that are necessary.
Does anybody want to be registered for the pre-conference?
I'll, I'll have to look at it and see. For me, I just, I know I completed some of my points. I just want to make sure I'm not overlapping, doing things twice.
How are you doing, Kevin? You got plenty of points. I think I do too.
I'm good.
And I, I'd start over.
So does everybody still want a Thursday night room, or you guys want to go over on Friday morning?
Oh, we'd have to get there early Friday morning.
You're good. So Thursday night's good?
Thursday night's good.
Okay, I'm going to cancel Saturday's night unless somebody tells me.
Cancel Saturday.
And then Paul, let me know if you need to be registered for the pre.
I'll let you know.
Okay.
One thing.
Is that something, I was saying, why don't you let you know by the ninth? Is that right? Isn't that the?
Yes, yeah. He'll let me know pretty soon. I mean, look at it. We're good.
When you're down there, one thing I would, I would ask you guys to pay extra attention to is all the legal changes that are happening. It's there right now. I'm not getting too deep into some of this discussion. We don't need to. I do want it out there that all the schools will, we will teach the standards that have been given to us by the State of Oklahoma.
Yes, sir.
And we will do it in a way that is legal with the statutes in State of Oklahoma. So with that being said, pay extra close attention to some of those meetings when you're in the city.
We try to get our books, and then we try to kind of divide up and go to, always try to go to something deeper so we can kind of go to bases. And then OSSBA, we could go put out a legislative debt sheet with the votes of the laws and their, their interpretation of it. I thought I brought it, but I guess it's sitting on my desk. No, but those are good. They are good. But it's available if you haven't looked at. It's just, it makes it a little more precise and you get through some of the weeds and then.
I'm sure there'll be lots of discussion up at the.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Number six, items of current business. Discussion with possible board action. Vote to approve the Alva School District's handbooks for the 24, 25 school year. We were just giving those last time. Anything that's changed is in red, red, for the elementary, it looks like. Middle school give us a different color?
Yellow.
Yellow. I think you're pink. Maybe. Or yellow. Mostly, it's mostly names, isn't it?
There are a few changes that we, the high school and middle school did as, together.
And they're, yeah, they're identical. I mean, not even almost identical, they are identical.
Yeah.
Yes. And it's the, it seemed like the lunch has changed on, on both of those.
So the original one that was presented to you at the last board meeting, that's the one that had the highlighted changes on it? And then we went back and.
Yes, cleaned it up to get to there. Okay, yes. A little longer lunch period? 11:45 to 12:20? Now that's normal.
That's the typical, yes.
It just wants to be purple for a reason. Okay. Right, too much on it. Okay.
Last thing I had to add is, is down the agenda, we'll talk about lunch prices for next year. That, that, there's new lunch prices when we put into those handbooks that are, put on the website.
Appreciate that. It's a lot of, a lot of work. So, entertain a motion to accept to approve these handbooks as presented. So moved.
I'll second.
Pinkleton.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
6.2, discussion with possible board action. Vote to approve and offer employment to applicant number one, and numbers, number one through number seven, non-certified positions for the 24, 25 school year.
These are all teachers aid or parent positions. Dylan, I'd recommend. Feeling, I'd recommend the hiring of seven individuals.
I move that we approve item six point two.
Second.
Kane?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Ingleton?
Yes.
Six point three, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the following contracts. All of those are not new, right?
They're all standard.
So we can approve those in one board vote if we'd like. Is that okay? I believe it is, okay. We did some changing, you can tell us what we need to know.
So the, the first one is the S R O contract, it's, it's the same as with last year. Allows for two resource officers. That is with Chief Workman, Assistant Chief Holly, with Dr. Nasswager, Mr. Beal and I. I think everybody's on the same page with resource officers. And we got the contract last week from the city. The next one is for circle H cleaning, that's Clint Harshman. Visit, again, a visit with all of our genders and what they need. Real, the big expectation was, and talked to Clint and got some of that, I think it was just a matter of getting some expectations. They're not on the same page. I would say there, so that's, that's virtually the same contract as it was last year. Chatterbox speech therapy, that is for online speech therapists. And stepping stones for psychology testing.
We thought the chatterbox speech worked well, didn't we?
Wait, chatterbox is actually, we didn't use them last year. They're new to us this year. They're based out of Oklahoma though, so they'll kind of bring it a little bit more local.
I thought I saw they were based out of New Jersey, or, I guess it is Tulsa. What did I see in Jersey?
Tulsa, New Jersey fest?
Was that, was that the stepping stone?
Stepping stone is billed through New Jersey, but I think they're actually out of Tulsa. The, the lady we use is out of Tulsa.
Okay. I knew that's something. I watched that when it came out on streaming.
Any more questions?
Make a motion. Approve six point three point one through six point three point four as.
A second.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Ingleton?
Yes.
Item number six point four, discussion with possible board action, vote to accept credits from Northwest Technology Center for students attending career tech classes and earning credits in mathematics and/or science for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. This is just an ongoing agreement we have, correct?
That is so that we can give math and science credits for career tech courses.
Make a motion, we approve six point four?
Second.
Ingleton?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Item six point five, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the following teachers as adjunct at structure, struck doors, for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And should we do them separately or all together?
In.
Okay, some of them are new to us. R H R E, that's not new. Brooke Myers done anatomy. One now fine, last year, Nick Broad last year. Emma White is new to those two positions.
It's Emma White and Emma Klein.
No.
They're two different Emma's, so.
Emma one and Emma two.
That's right. Emma was a popular name.
But Emma Klein's not new.
Right.
But Emma White is, okay, sorry. Make a motion, we accept, make, to accept six point five as presented with those adjunct instructions for twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
A second.
Ingleton?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Six point six, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the following child nutrition meal prices for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
So on that attachment, up there, I've got a, I've got a charge, got three columns. The first column is what we charged last year for lunches. The middle column is what we would re, be reimbursed for a free meal. So, so students on full, full free paid lunch. That's what, that's what we would be reimbursed. So for, and it's the same no matter the age. I know we, we charge different prices for different ages, but as far as our reimbursement, it's the same across the board. So reimbursement is a dollar ninety-eight, you're already charging two fifteen for breakfast. So I'd recommend to leave that alone, carry that across. The lunch price is, we get forty, I think we get forty-two cents per student that's on a full pay. Students still get forty-two cents reimbursed towards that. Full, a student who's got a free lunch, we would get four forty-three. So if you take the forty-two cents out of that that we already get reimbursed, we're still eating. We're well, that student's lunch should be worth four dollars and one cent. This is what the federal child nutrition guidelines would say. We're, we're going to get reimbursed. So four one is what the free lunch reimbursement is. Full pay students are only paying two fifty-five in elementary or two ninety in high school. So we're a dollar and a half or more off of that. Talked Keystone, this is the five-year renewal, our R F P. So that'll be a fun, one hundred and eighty-page application. When Alva got into that five years ago, I think five years ago, we're right before COVID. You gotta, we got a really good price, like a really good price. So that's going to go up, there's no doubt, okay? Yeah, and we, what we're charging for lunches is frankly, paying for it. So we need to go up on that, without a doubt. So I asked Diana, Ms. Keystone, I said, talk a couple of schools. What are they, what are some lunch prices? I know my old school was three dollars. I mean, for elementary, high school, that's three dollars. Guiman's at three dollars. It's got a couple of schools that are in that two eighty range, got a couple of schools that's in the three twenty range. Okay, so, so taking that in, I'd recommend that, you know, elementary lunch is two seventy-five, and middle school lunch is two eighty-five, and high school lunch is three dollars. So we're not going over three dollars in any category. But we are coming up, may as well be up again next year, see what that R F P looks like when it comes back. But I don't know about y'all, I know my price of groceries at our house has gone up dramatically in the last three years. So, and that's what we're seeing too. Now, as far as adult breakfast and lunch goes, I would recommend to, I'd recommend to charge an adult price that is the exact same as what the reimbursement price would be. Okay, if we, if we go below that reimbursement price, we have to, we have to cover that up for our general fund. So that's money that could be going to textbooks, it's money to get Chromebooks, teachers aides, things like that. I would rather take our general fund money and put it towards direct instruction. To be honest with you at this point, so anyway, that's where those prices came from. It's just literally exactly what the federal guidelines suggest. Anyway, with that being said, that's, that's my recommendation on lunch prices.
So what would the adults eat, just so we make sure we get it right in our handbook?
Be four ninety-seven.
Four ninety-seven?
For lunch.
And breakfasts?
Two thirty-seven.
Thank you.
Do most teachers eat? I don't know, they don't eat at school.
I always have a few, especially certain hours.
Not in time.
Ten percent? Twenty percent?
I'd say probably fifteen percent.
Chicken, numbers, mashed potatoes. It's a good fifty percent.
So what are they going to say with the pricing crisis? Because it's, the, the, the lunch is going up seventy cents, okay?
You can't go to the halls for that.
Not even close.
If you're going to eat lunch, it's, it's convenient, I mean, so.
Five dollars, I mean.
You're not going to get it.
It's a deal.
Yeah, it is.
I mean, you bring them home, you have leftover, that's fine.
The only real complaint that I've heard is, like, they're getting served the same amount as a kid, as a student.
And to be fair, that's set by U S D A.
Right.
That, U S D A gives guidelines of how many ounces of protein you have to have, how many ounces of starches you can have, all the things. So those portion sizes are set by.
I've never made it through school. I've never made it through school.
With seconds?
With or to nothing.
Oh, yeah, seconds were a thing.
Oh, yeah.
And thirds.
Yeah.
They had, they gave them thirds.
That's right.
I think we all turned out pretty good.
Well.
I might, I might eat this one much more.
I was going to say, well, it's.
Pretty good.
You could walk along though, and eat down there for.
Yeah, you could.
It was nothing.
Yeah.
Time you walk there, you.
I'd be hungry when I got back.
Well, I could see, like, you maybe are men teachers and things, it might be not much of a serving. I don't know. I don't know. Anyway, I would leave that then said, but thank you for sharing that. We'll, they still can bring their own and it's okay.
Right.
Do they still have a salad bar or anything like that, like they're used to?
So.
We have an excellent salad bar.
I ordered.
Yeah.
It's happening in Longfellow.
You'll see more, you'll see more of my stuff.
Yeah.
Well, it's pretty good.
Washington one or the door one? We kind of toss that back and forth in Washington.
Teachers would like it, but if we have a salad bar for teachers and we also have to serve it to students. And our teachers are on lunch duty a hundred percent of the time, so they squirt the ketchup and give them the fork. So to also do a buffet-style salad for, you know, eighty kindergarteners in a twenty-five-minute lunch period wouldn't happen, so.
And there's, there was talk, and I don't know, we're talking. You know, high school does the order, order ahead or whatever, you get chicken salad. There's talk of letting teachers do order through the high school, they have delivered that to the sites. Haven't told you all that yet, it's talk. But I think that's, I think that's something.
The, the middle school already does order ahead.
So Lincoln, Lincoln up does.
Is that, I know, like we said, like we get the portions of our children. So like, Washington teachers get a smaller portion than high school teachers. So can, would we get high school portion?
It's a talk.
If you're ordering it from the high school?
That would be a nice discussion.
I suppose it talks.
They would like that better.
It seems reasonable.
Well, Diana was being first up this morning in the cafeteria, so once, I've heard you all that. I'm supposed to go for tomorrow, Wednesday, hiring out some of this other stuff, so.
I will say Keystone is really good to work with. I mean, every time we talk with Rebecca or any of them, they just, they really want to know what we want, what's working, how, or the kids. What do you hear about from the kids?
Promise.
They're, so, they've been great to us.
Make a motion for a six point six? Yes, please. Shall I move?
Second.
Barton?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Ingleton?
Yes.
Okay, any new business? Not many. Proposed executive session to discuss our A E A negotiations per twenty-five Oklahoma State statute, section three oh seven B two. So move a motion or a second?
Second.
Ingleton?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.